Everyone, welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling Greg Killman. Hi Greg.
Hello, everyone. We're really glad you're here today.
We also have the incomparable Julian Pollan from our team. What's up you guys?
Hello.
Come in and let us know where in the world you're coming in from here in the chat. We're always excited to see you. It's our favorite time of the week. You can get together with your team, young living family, and learn about new ways to work smarter, not harder to grow your young living business. This is a free thing that we offer to all of the young living communities. So we welcome you to welcome your team, to share this with friends. Today, we're going to be talking about a specific feature inside of the Get Oiling platform. But that is not what we talk about every single week. Every week, we talk about all kinds of things that can help you to work smarter and help you grow your young living brand partner business, even if you aren't a part of the Get Oiling community specifically. So we hope that you do join us. We are a dollar for your first month for our most popular plans. And we have plans that start at $7 a month. So if you're just getting your feet wet with sharing, we've got you all the way up through your royal crown diamond business. So we're built to serve you as you grow. So today, we're going to be focusing specifically on a brand new feature. I've got some slides prepared that I'm going to pull up and show you guys here in just a sec. But let me head over into the chat real quick and see everybody where everybody's coming in from, who is excited to learn about this today. What's up, everybody? Come on, don't be shy. Come say hi. We're also streaming in our Facebook group. If you are not a member, make sure you look us up, come and check us out and join if you are on Facebook. So yeah, without further ado, let's go ahead and pop out a video real quick, team, and we are going to go through a couple of just really quick slides. What is up North Carolina, Minnesota, Eastern Tennessee? Phoenix, hello, welcome you guys. Get so, so very excited to have you here. Let me turn off my video here real quick. Okay, perfect. All right. So today, as promised, we are going to talk about the Get Oiling Success Academy and what that is, what it does, and how it can help you grow. So first, we're going to talk a little bit about what the Get Oiling Success Academy is, how to use it so that you can make sure that you are fully set up in Get Oiling, that you're on track with the projects that you're using Get Oiling for. And then, of course, to help you get the most out of your Get Oiling account. And we do have a live help and Q and A as always on this call. We do have someone signed up for a live work review as well. So if you have questions throughout today's call, if you need help, add those questions to the Q and A, please. Our chat can get a little busy and we want to make sure that we get to all of your questions. And of course, that's here on Zoom. If you're watching this as a replay, you can go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession to be able to join our live Zoom call here. We will often do hands-on work with folks who are on the call. You can ask your question. Sometimes we'll bring you out to speak. We can get into your account, work on things together. So many amazing things we can do during these live calls. So I hope that you will hop on the list so you know what's coming up and you can join us live. We're live every Thursday at noon US Eastern Time. Now, if you are wanting help with getting things done, you can go to getoiling.com/conceierge. If you're looking to have someone do stuff for you, and also if you'd like to have help on a live call like we will be doing a bit later today, you can go to getoiling.com/webstatereview and we can actively work together on whatever the project is in your account. So with that said, let's go ahead and hop out of our let's hop out of our share here. If it will let me. Oh, weird. It is not wanting to let me get out of this. Just a second. Hey Greg, would you mind maybe taking over the share from me? This is a strange thing that's happening with my Zoom here. Stop letting me do anything.
Forwards you to this page where you have to fill out a form and then you get a link to get into this course. Well, with this Success Academy, you don't have to remember like where's the login, all that stuff. It will automatically log you in. So if you click on this, it'll pop up a little. Whoops, it'll, it'll pop up a little window where it's showing you. Okay, well, maybe I'll have to look at that one, but let me try another one here. So, oh, well, that's weird. Okay. Anyway, it's supposed to log you in. Stuff always goes wrong in the demo, right? But you should be able to click and boy, it's like my internet is getting, my fonts are all weird. One second, let me, let me go back in here in case some, something is going awry. One sec, my computer is having issues. It just installed some updates. So anyway, okay, so I'll just you can click through on that. It takes you right to the course. So you don't have to log in or anything. As well as, so there's these other, the other categories over here that have these little arrows, those are, they take you to a screen where they basically just take you to a portion of the system. So like, if you want to add a contact by hand or import from the virtual office or a file that you have, that's here, you can just click and it'll take you right over, you know, for example, right to the import screen. So we have some common features. Generally, you know, like when people are getting started, they want to know how to get more leads. They probably have a couple of people or many, you know, depending where you're at in the virtual office that you want to bring in. So we've got links for that. Oftentimes, people like to message them. So we have some linked up some trainings about email and text. And then you can actually click a button here and it'll take you to send the email or text. And of course, these are all features, you know, these features exist already in the menu. These are just shortcuts to common items, you know, like holding a Zoom meeting, setting up an event. There's some training on learning how to make a site as well as links to go there. And then we have links up to our, our online course training as well as a link to, you know, for example, download the app. So you can pull that up here and click and download the app. And then you can share that off with, with people if you'd like as well. So Common Projects, we have that great tab for getting you started right away. And under account setup, this is for if you'd like to dive in and do a little bit more get customized on your site. You want to maybe connect a domain name, or perhaps you're looking to connect payments as well as improve your email deliverability. We do have those here, you know, as you mark, as you get these done, this will progress bar will move along. And, you know, for example, if you want to connect your domain name, you can do that. It gives you some instructions on how to do that. If you want to set up payments, it'll take you right to the page where you want, where you can go set up payments. And then there's some more information about improving the mail deliverability here too. But beyond that, we've got also down here, you know, the website basics, like this is where you set up your homepage logo and your footer, links over to your email signature, changing your fonts and colors. That's all linked up down here because these are very common things that people are looking to do. And we've seen, you know, a lot of people ask about these through support, or maybe they're not sure, like, how do I connect my domain name to my website? That kind of thing. So that's all in one nice central location. And over here, we've got some online courses that are all available as well. So including the search to help library. I mean, it's online resources. So if you click this, it opens up the sidebar where you can search the help center. And then we have some other courses as well. You know, like Destined for Diamond, we have a list of, you know, like here's a list of some of the courses that we have. I think we, you know, there are a few more in here that aren't in the the big list because they're not quite as often used, but we do have those in there. And then all the rest of these will take you over to the course, you know, directly. And one of them, you know, like the Destined for Diamond, for example, is it's actually email series that behaves a little bit differently. But some of these other ones, like the Lead Generation Workshop and all that. Whoops, my screen shares never, okay, let me go back here. So like the Lead Generation Workshop, I click on that and then launch the course. And that will open it up. This is, I guess, started working now, but it'll open it up and get you right in there as well. So these are all, you know, so we've got training on Invest in for Diamond is kind of a kickstart with getting your brand partner business going with Get Oiling, integrating the two. And then we have, you know, Lead Generation Workshop, this Brand My Business Workshop, which is something that relatively recent one, a few other courses that we put together in a group on how to, or a, and a course on how to set up your member area as well as, you know, like move your groups off of social media, kind of all in one place. And everybody's favorite tab over here, the Get Help From A Real Person one. We do have several ways of getting in touch with us, you know, our Facebook group, the live training that you guys are already on. And I know many of you are aware that you can apply for help on the weekly work session, but you can do that here as well. And then, you know, if you click Apply Now, it takes you to the form to fill it out. You can learn how to hire a team, concierge, as Ashley had mentioned a few minutes ago. And hop over to our Facebook group. There's even a send message button here, which actually opens up a little window where you can send your message right to us and it'll go right back to, it'll reply to your email. You don't even have to open up your email program. So it looks like Ashley is back now. I can, are you? I haven't quite covered the live training tab, but I don't know, Ashley, what you had planned prior to this point, but you're certainly welcome to take over. I can continue up at the live training here.
Yeah, I'm here. Hopefully you can hear me. My Bluetooth just totally bombed. Sorry, you guys. I think what Colin said, we can blame this on Mercury and retrograde. It's almost done, right? So there were a couple of things. There's some feedback here in terms of how people are maybe interacting with a couple of the courses. So that's something that you guys will take into note and make sure that we maybe adjust the routing there for that. But yeah, I think that the, the best way to approach this is first, if you're brand new to Get Oiling is to begin with the account setup and just make sure that you've got all of those boxes kind of colored in, right? That, that they are showing up as Greg is showing you here, right? So you want to be able to make sure you've got your domain connected. You've got payments set up if you're going to use them. You've got your mail server and then go through all of the stuff that's here. And then from there, pick a project, right? So once you've picked a project, and maybe that's, I want to get a funnel set up for lead generation. Maybe I want to build my homepage. Then you can start choosing from our projects that come in projects that Greg put together or even diving deeper into those online resources as well. But Greg, you said you haven't gotten to the live training and replays tab yet. I think that's one of the coolest things in here. Can you show us that?
Yeah, yeah, I'd be happy to demo that. So this here shows the last, I can't remember, it's like 10 or something like that of the replay video, you know, or these weekly work session videos are older, straight from the YouTube channel. So whenever we're done publishing the replay later today, this call will be on here as well. So it'll just show up in the first slot and then kind of move down. But what it does, it pulls the, you know, pulls the thumbnail and the description from the YouTube channel, even links up your resources, like we get so many questions because YouTube really likes to, I mean, you really have to know, like this one has a resource bundle in here. You really got to know how to find it on YouTube. And I think it's even harder on the app, but like I'll, you know, if I pause this, pause this down here and it'll load for a second. Yeah, let me pause that. But down here, it's like in order to get the resource bundle on YouTube, you got to come down here and scroll through it. And then, oh, here's the link, you know, so it's really varied. But if on here now, it is just like right in the open, you know, like here's topic, how to improve your AI skills, you know, today's resource, you can click right to the resource. You know, no having to jump around and find it on YouTube. And yeah, it shows the last several of them. And of course, if you want to watch any of these, you just click on it and it does take you right to the channel. Which was really great. And the cool thing is there's a few, few links here. So like, if you want to view all the videos, this takes you, of course, to the YouTube channel that just lists them all. And it's being pretty slow for me today, but so it'll, it'll pull up all, I don't know, I've got over 200 videos on there now, but you can just scroll and scroll and scroll, whatever. If you want to view on the channel or you can view the, we have this view by topic link. And you can click on that and then it'll show you all the topics that we have, you know, YouTube calls them playlists, but essentially, you know, we have them organized by, you know, getting started, blogging, email, all these different categories that we have here, different topics. And then if you click on the beautiful playlist, it'll show you all the videos in that category. So it's a nice way to browse by topic as well. And the other cool thing is the search for video. This feature, it exists on YouTube, it's just kind of hard to find and it's really confusing, I think, because you know, if I go over here and I'll pick one of these, for example, and of course YouTube, they want you to, they want you to search all of YouTube and not just one channel. So like if I were to be watching this video and I would, I would like to search more videos on the Get Oiling channel. It takes a little bit of doing to get there. So I can, you know, you would have to, I guess you can't even do it from this screen. You have to go over here. Because the default is like, okay, I got to search up here. And of course, that searches all of YouTube. We don't want that. So you just want to search the channels. So you got to click on the YouTube or the Get Oiling button here. And then there's this faint little magnifying glass icon that lets you search. Well, instead of having to do all that, now there is the search for a video. So like, if you want to search for, I don't know, let's just search for email marketing and see if that comes up with anything. So search, it opens the search right on YouTube, which is great because then you don't have to figure out where to do that. And then when my computer decides to load this, it'll come up with everything that it thinks is a good match for your keyword there. So, you know, and now you don't have to like, I mean, you can still, obviously we'd love it if you still go subscribe to our YouTube channel and all that. But now it's just all integrated in here. And the other cool thing is like, these all have links, like if you right-click on any of these and they copy link address and you like, you know, like to bookmark it, you could. So like, if I come over here and, and paste that in, it'll be a link right to that. And then, you know, maybe you want to bookmark it like every, you know, you can just go click there and then the video is right there and you don't have to wade through YouTube to try to figure out where it is and watch ads and all that stuff. So yeah, I think this is a really cool feature. Really nice way to like streamline and pull all the training into one central location and make it a lot easier to navigate and find the resources, I think, you know, that people are looking for, that you guys are looking for. So very excited about this feature. And I will definitely see your comments about the, you know, you guys are seeing that same thing with the Common Project. So look into that and get that fixed up after the call here, but.
Yeah, thank you for that. This is so awesome. And we're just so excited to be able to provide you guys with a more contextual experience for what you're looking for at the moment. Right? So if you want to really get straight to it, you can. And that is really great feedback. I think we're, we're seeing folks being sent maybe to a landing page for a course where if they're already logged in to Get Oiling, maybe we could just send them straight to the vault. That might be a better about like an improvement for this, right? So awesome. Well, if you guys have any questions, feel free, please, to put those into the Q and A. And yeah, and we're happy to help you. I don't see, I had a CT set up for a review today. So if she does happen to show up, or if you're here, maybe under a different name, you can raise your hand and I can bring you out to chat. But there is some wide open space here. If you've got something that you would like to maybe talk through, maybe you've been stumped by a project that you would like to embark upon and you don't quite know where to begin with it. How many of us have been in that place? Maybe a quick show of hands. Have you? Here, we can actually, we can get back into video and out of the screen share here until our times, until it's time to get back into that. But I mean, how many of us have dealt with that before, right? Where you know that there's something that you want to have done. But it just feels so big. And especially if it's tech, right? It feels so big, so complicated. I don't know how to do any of this stuff, right? That familiar? Has it happened to you? Tell me in the chat what that is for you. Karen says blogging. Ooh. Do you want to talk? You want to talk about it? What does that look like? So what is what is the, the roadblock or the hangup look like for you? What's the thing that you would like to get going that just feels too big? And, and we'll take a quick look just for fun at how you could actually use this new dashboard to do that. So you can actually find exactly what you need to help you along those lines. Karen, if you'd like, you mentioned blogging here. Let me know in the chat if you'd be available to come out to talk and we can actually talk through a strategy here together. But let me go and show you guys real quick as well. Over here, when we're in the Success Academy, you know, we have, we have some common projects here, right? But you want to start blogging. So that's not necessarily something that we have right here as a common project, but that doesn't mean it's not in here, right? So what we could do is come over to we can come over here to our live training, for instance, and we can type in the word blog. And then you'll actually be able to go straight over here to see all of these videos looking, of course, I think first for the most recent ones are going to be the most helpful for you. Right? So this is, for instance, branding your blog and blog content. That's going to be a great tool to start with because that'll actually help you to, if you get over here, you'll actually see in the video that we are talking about not just what you're writing about, but how you make it look, right? Which is the thing that so many of us really get hung up on. Isn't it right? Making it look the way we think it's supposed to look and struggling with, with making a thing do what we want it to do. So Karen, yeah, I'm going to bring you out to chat. Awesome. Thanks for coming out. Tell me about your goals with blogging and what you're interested in doing. It looks like you're unmuted, but we can't hear you. Can you guys hear her? Okay. Let's see if we can get that worked out. We also have can you hear me now? Yes, there you are. Hi.
Yay, hi.
Yeah, so let's hear it. Tell me about what you're interested in doing with that, with your blog.
Okay, so I like to write articles on nutrition and, you know, as a nutritionist and incorporating essential oils and supplements that can help get results. And when I went to the blogging section, you know, the tab, I was a little overwhelmed just because of the technology, just to get it set up. I guess, you know, I didn't have the time at, at that moment to work through it, but that's, that's my biggest challenge. But I would love to use that feature, so.
Yeah. So I think that the best way to get started with blogging is to just start. And what that would look like is really just publishing a post with what you want to say. Because once it's published, it's working for you, right? And then you're able to then go and see what it looks like. And then with that published thing, you can tweak this thing and tweak that thing and go and look and see how it behaves and performs visually, for instance. There are a lot of things that you can do, but very few of us, I think, ever start off with everything fully optimized to the hilt. Right? So in this, the training actually that I was just mentioning, I am pretty positive that this one.
If I
Yes, branding your blog. I think, yep, this one actually has a resource bundle. And this resource bundle does have a blog post included in it that's already sort of pre-formatted for you. So if you want to make it look a particular way, then you can actually use that to follow along.
Okay. And I appreciate Greg and Colin both responding to me and sent me a link for the video. So I just need to take the time to go do it. So the responsiveness of y'all, you know, you're great. Every time I send in a question or anything, you get right back to me. So I really appreciate that. So.
Yeah, absolutely. I would, you know, just to give you the clips notes on all of this, you want to write something that's in the neighborhood of 1,000 words, right? Use AI if you need to.
Okay.
And include a couple of photos. We do give resolution size recommendations. But I want to say it's 1,200 by 630 is minimum because that's going to look really nice when you share it on social media, for instance. And then you want to make sure, and this is going to be more to the SEO stuff, you want to make sure that you have nice headlines using the header text. Are you familiar with that feature?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So using the header paragraph setting for your headlines, using keywords in those. And, and then, you know, if you want to have a header image, then that's something that you can, you can set up in the blog settings. Again, that's not something that's necessary in order for you to be able to, to get any of this done. And I think a lot of people actually forego it because it creates a lot of visual space before you can actually get to the digest of the blog post. If you want to have a sidebar, you could have a sidebar, but you don't need it. So here's the blog settings here. The personalization options. So in this case, we've got a big, big image here. This is the footer. So if you have a lead magnet, you might consider linking that down here in the footer section. And that's for everything for the, for the page, right? And then this, this is the post footer. So if you want to offer, you know, adding them to your list or to follow you on social, et cetera, you could put something like that into a footer. And then this is the sidebar, which shows up over on, on the side, of course, of the content. That's where you'll often see if you go to like a recipe blog or something like that, somebody's picture, the quick little blurb. And usually a link to something free or to read more in their about me section. And that's really, that's, that's it. It's pretty simple and straightforward. I can show you what this looks like when that is set up on her blog digest page here. So you see how that's a really big image at the top? You really don't have to have that. And then this is what it looks like if you don't use an excerpt. And this is the final thing that I want to talk to you about is actually using an excerpt. You want your blog to look like this on your, on your blog digest page. And that is, you've got your image for your blog post, you've got your title, you've got a little bit, this is your excerpt. And then they can read more, open it up and actually go to the blog post. Now, this is actually the one that I give away in that training that was just mentioned in that resource bundle. But that's what we want to see. See, if we don't do an excerpt, then you're just going to see everything. Right? And you have to just keep scrolling and scrolling and, and you know, they're going to read the whole article without clicking. So that makes sense. But that's the clip, really.
Great. Well, thank you very much. That gives me some good guidance and I'll, I'll do that.
Awesome, awesome. Excited to see what you do with it. Thanks for coming out, Karen.
Thanks.
All right, game is open as well for anybody else to come play. If you would like to chat about what you are working on, if you want to work out a game plan or just get a big overview of what's coming next for you on a project that you would like to embark on. Lisa says she was nervous about setting up a funnel, but she's now excited to check out the training that's available. Definitely check out the training that's available there in the academy, specifically the, the Get Leads one, that is going to work for you in an afternoon. If you've got an afternoon to commit to this, you can have that done and taken care of. And done is better than perfect. You will come up with a better lead magnet in the future, I promise. But you're not, you'll never create a better one if you didn't create a first one. Right? So, so let's get that done. And let's see who else. Donna says, one of my biggest challenges And let's see who else Donna says, one of my biggest challenges has been finding the right training when I'm working in my account and get stuck. Yeah, so this is. This is where you're going to want to look for sure. I'm excited for you. I'm going to see if CT has come out. I know she signed up yesterday. Hopefully, everything's okay. With her, but yeah, you guys, if there are, yep, Jackie, we will have you on next week. Yeah, that is, thanks for for mentioning that. Just a quick preview. How many of you guys know about Sways? Sway presentations. If you have Grow Workspace, you've definitely seen these, right? A lot of folks in the young living space are familiar with that because they have. That they have those nice sway files. And sway files can be used in a bunch of really interesting ways in Get Oiling. And so next week, Jackie, who is just so prolific in her ability to create these interactive presentations that you can. Send via link uses class content in your Good Oiling member area, which is what she does. You know, can be an easy newsletter embed for a page, all kinds of amazing stuff you can do with this. She's going to show you some of the things that she does with Sways next week. And and I'll be showing you how these special types of files can work for you in your Get Oiling system. So definitely check that out. Okay, Lisa says, within your blog post, what do you suggest with bolding and italicizing? So bolding and italicizing, they don't necessarily have a significant impact on the. Unlike your SEO. It really has more to do with the readability and how the eye is flowing down the page, staying on the page longer, you know, reading through, clicking. On links and things like that. So obviously where it makes sense to provide emphasis. Definitely use those formatting tools. But one of the things that you may have seen, and this is, I'll show you this again here and. The sample blog post from that training. We have, you see how this is bold right here? This actually isn't bold. This is in heading one format. So if we were to go and create. A blog post and get oiling. We would actually be using a couple of different types of paragraph settings, and this is going to be the case, I think, for you. Especially if you're going to be writing anything that's longer form, whether that's a blog post or even a page. So if we've got our blog post here. And that's our blog post title. Then we'll, we'll have our opening words about the blog post. You know, read on to learn more. And then we've got the points that we're making in our blog post, right? So we're going to go over here where to our paragraph settings and go to heading one. And this is going to be first point of blog post and we'll use keywords here. Right? And then when we hit enter, then we have more of the body. Of the blog post, right? And then you're going to go through and you'll create another header when you get to the second point, right? So this is not actually bolding and italicizing. This would be. Bolding. Right here, so going bold. Or italicizing. Those don't make quite as much of a difference as creating these header one or even header two. These are both important to include in your blog post formatting. Amanda, you said you're having problems with your unsubscribe options. Let's talk through that. And then Paula says, okay, yeah, Paula. You're the first, first with the ear on the ground there. For those of you who are in Jill Kearns's. Vibrant vendor events training. We do not yet have pages worked out there for for essentially Brits flyers, but we will be chatting and. And talking about how we can get those flyers turned into Get Oiling page format so that she can be a new content provider if she chooses to be for the Good Oiling community, so. Be sure to let you guys know you will be the first to know, I promise. All right, Amanda, I'd like to bring you out, please, and let's talk about the unsubscribe options. Hi.
Hi, Ashley.
Hey, how can we help?
Um, so when somebody goes to unsubscribe from my email, it's giving them. A lot of options to unsubscribe, like it has YL tips twice. YL oils multiple times. So they're having to click through a whole, like a big list if they want to unsubscribe. And so. I'm not sure what I'm doing wrong. That caused that. I do use Modern Companion. And download that. I don't know if. Importing those resource bundles causing this problem, but I just wanted to clean that up. So someone goes to unsubscribe, they don't have to click through 100 things.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's a great, it's a great question and an important one, I think, for us to understand, like, sort of the mechanisms of of how. How this works. So the the list that she's seeing is that of the campaigns that she subscribed to. Even if those campaigns stopped sending messages a year ago, those campaigns are still there on the list. So what I would do just as a matter of maintenance is. Is is to go back like to your campaigns and find the people who are subscribed to them. And remove that campaign from those people. So let's just say, for instance, you've got your oily tips for August. And those are done sending, maybe have it be a thing that you do first of the month that you go in. And you're probably going to get rid of that campaign because you're not using it because it's for this year, right? It's for this month's gift with purchase or whatever. Go ahead and remove everybody from that campaign who's on it. And then you can get rid of the campaign, so it's not taking up, you know, that additional space in your system. We do have a self-destructing campaign on our wishlist, which would, I would think if if we could get that set up eventually. Maybe there's, you know, there could be like a little checkbox for like, you know, remove this campaign once it's done sending or something like that. That would eliminate the need for you to create an automation for every campaign that removes this campaign from the person it's applied to at the last. The last message, but that is something that you can also do. That's sort of a final step there is. You could create an automation that removes this campaign. And I would do this especially for campaigns that you're going to use on an evergreen basis, right? So like your onboarding campaigns. Maybe new brand partner campaigns, things like that. Have a, an automation that you apply to the last message of that campaign that removes the campaign from the contact. But for the, for the content that's like, you know, the campaigns that are just like one message. I actually typically like to recommend to our content providers and really to any anyone who's listening. If you've got something that's only meant to be used one time, unless it's supposed to be on the other side of a landing page. If it's supposed to just be broadcasted at a time of day when when you plan for it to go out, such as a newsletter or gift with purchase. That is really a best fit for like a saved reply. Because then you're sending that out as a broadcast to people and you don't have to worry about removing a campaign from somebody in the future.
Okay, so that. I'm just trying to, where it's showing up in the unsubscribe list is that? The info that features under the campaign name show into contact? So they can unsubscribe for that campaign. Okay, all right. So that is a mandatory field because I thought it had something to do with the collections for some reason. And they like no collections are showing up in my. Database. And my Get Oiling. So I wasn't sure if it was a collection thing or the campaign name. So now I know to remove that.
Yeah, so this is, this is what they're going to see. So this would be the 28 day challenge. For instance, so this is what would show up in that list when they're unsubscribing is this one.
Okay, all right, that makes sense. And. And if I want to make a note that these people have had the. I've previously sent on that campaign, I can just put in a. I just want to know how I could record that for each individual person that I've previously sent on the campaign, or would that just be a matter of. Looking up emails previously sent?
Yeah, so what you would do is like if if a campaign, for instance, again, is something that you know is no longer sending to anyone. So this is something that you're not using on an evergreen basis, then all you really need to do is go here to your contacts. So here's contact, right? And then we can go to actions, bulk actions, and then I can remove. That campaign from all of those people. So it's basically two options that you have here. Option one is if this is a campaign. That is done being used, or you're not going to use it again for a while, nobody's actively receiving anything, then follow this, go to your campaigns list. Locate the contacts, you're going to be able to click if anyone's on it. And when you click it, you can go and bulk remove that campaign from everybody. Again, only do this if it's a campaign that you know is completed sending to everyone. But if it is something that you're using on an ongoing basis, then in that case, we would create an automation that removes them from the campaign. So let's just say that's this enter to win confirmation is that one. So we would just create an automation that removes the contact. Oops, that's not the one that I want. Automations is here. Okay, so here we would create an automation. It would be. Remove from enter to win campaign. And we will find that enter to win. And remove. And then once we have that automation created. Then under the campaign, we can go back to that enter to win campaign. Under our advanced settings, we can apply that. Enter to win. So once this is done, it's done. I wouldn't do this for every single campaign you have, though, just just the ones that you know you're going to be using on an ongoing basis.
Okay, awesome. All right, so like onboarding new members that then I would use that one, but not just for my monthly August weekly tips.
Yeah, exactly. For your monthly stuff, I would just after it's sent, go ahead and remove it from everyone unless it's multi. Like unless you know it's going to be sending out for the whole month of August and you're going to want to just make that be a thing that you do in September when you set up your September mails.
Okay, perfect. That makes sense. I so appreciate that. That's really helpful. And now I can go fix. Spend some time fixing that up. Thank you.
Awesome, awesome. Glad we can help. Okay, let's see. Allison says they set up a campaign that was supposed to start in the 26th, the 28th, and the 30th, but now it says it's going out on the 28th, 31st, and 3rd. Okay, getting right the the dates for campaigns. Yeah, Allison, I can go ahead and bring you out if you'd like. Let me know if you want to come out and chat, just pop into the chat and say yes, sir. Whether you can, and we'll bring you out. So date based campaigns, when you're setting those up. A couple of things to note. Number one, if you're going to edit a campaign at all that has already been applied to others. Then they're going to receive whatever the version was of that campaign when they signed up for it. That's the most important thing. If you are kind of in the middle of a thing that's already happening and we're not quite getting the date based campaign information, right? Then it might be best to just go ahead and remove that campaign and schedule some broadcasts to a tagged audience so that folks can get that. Get that information on time. Okay, you said yes, I will bring you out. Hello. And let me know if Allison, if if you would. Like to look at this in your account or if it would work the same for you to have like a dummy account.
Sure, you can look at it in my account. That's totally fine. It was just really weird when I I get the original text. I got the original text on, let me see when it actually came. I think it was the 28th, which is what it says it's doing, but I didn't want it. I want it to be done by. Today or yesterday.
Okay.
Because it was kind of my August tips that I. Messed up. And getting started.
So is it called August?
August tips.
Okay.
So the first one came out on Monday, which was the 28th, so that makes sense. And today's. I would have, I would have wanted them to be done in August, so when I start the September tips, which I guess I could just remove. That diffuser trouble. And put it in my September tips campaign.
You could, but you would have to make sure again that you remove this campaign from everyone that it's applied to.
Can I just mark it on like, like I had that first one? Disabled? Can I just disable the?
That's a good question, Greg. Can you just, if you disable a message, will it stop sending even to people that the campaign is applied to?
Yeah, it basically, yeah, it would. I would just not send anything in the future. Of course, if it's been sent already, you can't take that back, but yeah, stop to go forward.
Okay, so if it's not already sent, so so then you 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 could you could disable. This message, yeah.
Okay, so then I guess I'll just do that. But what's the trick on getting the date correct? Because I do the on specific date and I feel like. I'm throwing spaghetti at the wall to try to, okay, well, let's put it in for. The 16th and see if it goes when I want. Let's try the 28th, let's try today, let, you know, and I can't ever see, it's really difficult. And then I feel like it changed, like I thought I had. You know. Found the right one to be done at the end of August and then now it's. Not.
Got you. Okay, so so the date, this is always going to be. Imagine it's, it's going to need to be the day, at least the day before you want something to send. So if we wanted. This to go out, starting on the. 28th, like you have it here, then we would, we could set this up as the 20, to deliver on the 27th, the specific date is the 27th. Because day one is going to be the 28th, right? So day zero is always going to be the immediate message that goes out regardless of what day they signed up for for whatever they got this campaign with, right? Day one is always going to be the following day, either 24 hours later or whatever time you specify the following calendar day. So if you want, for instance, to set up a campaign and let's just pretend, let's create a new one. And this will be our September. 23 tips.
You can probably just look on search September and there may be.
Oh, you already have it. Okay, yeah, sure.
And you can just play with that one because I'll be redoing it.
Beautiful.
Whatever Grow did. The connection campaign. Down lower.
So which which one then?
Down lower, there was a 22 connection.
This one?
Yeah, we can try that one. That has four messages and just play around with that.
Okay, great.
But there's people on it. Does that matter? Should we not?
You want to, you want to definitely remove them from it, especially if you're going to be sending it to them again.
Oh, no, I was going to have a new one because Modern Companion has one already set up.
Got you.
For purposes of playing around, just do it.
Cool.
Unless it's going to trigger.
No, no, it's not. They've, these people would have received this a year ago, so no, they got it as it was made.
Okay. So let's say I wanted it to start on. August 1st.
Or or September 1st?
September 1st, yeah.
So we want this to, so we want them to get their first email on September 1st, correct?
Right.
So then we need to set the delivery date for this to be today. And then they're going to receive the first one tomorrow. The next one on the 8th, then the 15th, the 15th and the 22nd. So you can actually see.
Okay.
They'll come out.
Let's say you wanted it to. Go on all the Saturdays.
You wanted it to go on Saturdays? Okay, so the Saturdays in September. Are going to be the second through the 30th. So these are already set up, I believe, seven days apart. So if we want it to start going out on the second, then we will make the delivery date. The first of September, and now that's a Saturday.
So always put it in the day before?
Yeah, because it's because it sends on day one.
So if I had it going in on day two, I would do it two days before?
I mean, but you. You don't have to do it on day two unless you want a day one, right? So if if you want them to receive, the only math that you need to do is a subtraction of one. Right? So when do I want to send it? Then the specific data here needs to be one day before, and then you've got your day one and then whatever your interval is that follows. So if I want.
Well, say I wanted to start it on the 9th.
You want to start this on September 9th? Okay.
When I would click the 8th?
Yeah.
Why does it always seem so simple when I'm on the phone with you guys and then I try to work it out? It's always goofy.
Just remember that the reason why there is send on a specific date. Day one is always going to be the next day, and it's the same as if it's a campaign that's not date based, right? Day zero is immediate, it's whenever they did it. And it could be, it could be at 11:59 PM Central Time is when they sign up. But the next day, you know, like technically a minute later, they could get day one, right? But it's always going to be a day after. It's always going to be a calendar day after because that's when day one is. And then also provides you the opportunity for a day zero, right? Because day zero needs to be that day. So if you're putting signups out there. So let's just pretend you had a day zero message here, an additional message that says, I'm so excited you're signed up, look for the emails on Saturdays. Right? Then you could have that be a day zero message and start sharing this right away. And they could sign up on Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and they're going to get an email right away, whichever day that was that they signed up on. And then they're going to start receiving these Saturday emails, right? Or well. Yeah, the Saturday email.
So the zero message I get, it's it's when it's not, like, I know the zero message always goes out immediately. I guess. I guess, I guess I'm, I you know, I guess I feel like there should be a way because Modern Companion since Ted's already sent off the tips for this month. So I should theoretically be able to go into that campaign. I think I I think it's in there. I don't know, you can search for it and be able to add my people to it and have it go when I want it to get there.
Yeah, you, I mean, you could, if you have the content ahead of time, you could be doing this for January if you want to.
And then I got to fiddle with the date and hopefully it works.
It'll work if you set the delivery date up to be a day before if your first message is day one.
Oh, and if I wanted to start the day of, then I just put it in the day of?
Uh.
That won't work because it immediately will be.
It depends. It depends, right? Because if if you're, if your first message is a day zero, it matters um what time you're online and applying this campaign to everybody. If you're up at two AM, that day zero message is going to go out at two AM. So you can have, you can use day zero in a date-based campaign and have day zero be your content. You just want to be mindful of the time of day that you're sending it.
Okay. All right, I think I get it.
Okay, awesome, awesome. Glad we could help. All right, CT, you're here. Hi.
Hi.
Good. How can we help you?
Uh, hi, Kavi, if I'm doing this. Um, I just uh sort of finalized my website, the design, so maybe I just wanted your expertise, you know, on how I can improve um in terms of like leveraging the website. I think I've been a member for a year or two. I just wanna, I don't know, leverage more and get more uh lead magnets. I mean, you know, like more people.
Yes.
So I'm a bit nervous.
Oh, I'm so excited for you. Yeah, let's let's go take a look.
Okay.
Oh, this is beautiful. All right, hold on. Let me let you guys see this. All right, so we've got our pop-up here.
Yeah.
This is a picture of you and your kids.
Yes, high five boys.
Oh, how beautiful. I love this. Oh, and the pink, this is fantastic.
So I don't know, I'm I'm not sure if I'm, the the fonts are, in terms of size, I'm having a bit of difficulty navigating between mobile and uh website, you know, because website looks different and then when I on my mobile is like all over the place.
Yeah.
I actually got on a call with Jessica via Concierge.
Oh, good.
You know, so she she did, she did help a little bit here and there.
Okay, fantastic. So um yeah, mo- mobile can be a little tricky. Uh my recommendation generally is just to, you know, first build the website that you want, right?
Okay.
And then test it, right? So look at it in mobile. And then if there's not a way for that section that you really love on desktop to work on mobile, uh then make a copy of the section or make a new section that's formatted a little differently, that shows content a little differently. So. Oh, this is nice.
Yeah, and I recently got on uh Martha's uh Cutting Edge.
Okay.
So I'm still um, I guess, um ticking my bed signal and yeah, so one of the advice.
It looks to me like you know who, I mean, you're you're talking to moms who want balance.
I am, I am, yeah. Um, one of the uh one of the advices given by, because right now the free Facebook community is by Martha. You know, the happy, healthy, living life. So she's saying that, you know, maybe I can offer something that's mine. So the my, so that people can hear more from me and not from Martha in that sense.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, but so I'm 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 not sure whether to open up another member area that is open to public, you know.
Hmm.
Oh, and the squares are not, I can't get the squares to be the same for all four of them.
Oh, I know what you mean. I know what you mean. This this is something that I struggle with uh as well uh with using these four-part sections. Sometimes what I'll do is if I get to the point where for whatever reason the code is not cooperating with me, I'll just create a new four-part section.
Okay.
Just start to like co- copy and paste, just make sure you're pasting plain text. Um but but it's I actually didn't notice it until you pointed it out.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, so this is, this is really beautiful. You're, you've done an amazing job with making this look really nice. Um.
Okay.
I would encourage you to maybe make uh some images for your events.
Okay.
Make this pop. You got one right here. Uh but um having event uh images, it it looks really nice.
Okay, alright.
Oh, pretty. Definitely uh consider using um the excerpt feature so that um they can see when they're scrolling through here, they can see more of your posts.
Um, how how's that?
Yeah, yeah, so um the the excerpt, here, let me pop out of here real quick and I will actually go into oh, I'm actually already signed in. Hold on just a second, I'll go back.
Okay.
Okay, so what this would look like in your blog post right here?
Yeah.
Is to go down here to the bottom uh where we can go under advanced options. And this is where we would show an excerpt. So here, I'll take a little excerpt from the top here. And um I'll copy this. And then I'll paste it here.
Oh, okay.
And then um let me see. Yeah, and then so I'll hit save changes. And then if we come back over here, you can see that it looks like this.
Oh, okay.
So it'll allow people to kind of scroll through your content easily and choose.
Do I have to do that for all the entries previously? Okay, okay.
And then they would all look like that.
Alright, okay.
I think it is that most people arrive at a website via a blog post that was sent somewhere else. So most people aren't going to just be going to the blog page on your website, but that is an improvement uh that I like consider making. Alright, so you've got your Calendly here. Uh you know, you can embed your Calendly form on a page on your website, so you don't have.
Oh, I I didn't know that.
Yeah, so you can actually uh keep them on your website instead of sending them somewhere. Let's see, you've got your Young Living, your Shop Young Living, fantastic. This is so good. This is so good. You um so you were talking about um with your with your members, um like having having like a free community. Uh would you say that for for your, you know, the the career mom? Like that's that's your person, you're the career mom who wants to keep things balanced. Does she spend time on Facebook?
I'm on Instagram.
Okay, but and so so the this this mom, though, if she wanted to like spend time with other moms, like where 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 would she be spending her time? Um to interact virtually.
Where I'm at, Facebook is kind of phasing out.
Huh.
More of Instagram, I think, and perhaps YouTube.
Okay. And if you were to create like a private space for for them to communicate with one another.
Mm-hmm.
I guess it does. It seems like a vault might be a best place to do that if Facebook is sort of a thing that you're not interested in using, so.
Yeah.
Um yeah, so I I would create a free vault.
Okay.
Maybe give that away when you're giving away this handbook.
Okay.
And then you've got an opportunity for discussion in there. You could host challenges in there. Um and I would really encourage, if you are going to take that route, uh to think about a way that you can recruit investment, social investment uh by the members of the community. Uh so you know, maybe having like a weekly share what you're making for dinner. Um you know, share this week's favorite recipe or like just to to get them actively invested in being part of a community that's helping each other. Um and that'll get your engagement there, because that is, I I think the benefit of like why Martha uses lead groups on Facebook and why it works for a lot of people uh is because people have a natural inclination on Facebook to get in, be active and be helpful with others, depending on the context of the group. Uh and so because it's a place that they hang out, Facebook is a place that a lot of people just love to waste time. And so if if you're uh if your community is there where they're hanging out anyway, then it's easier to get them to engage. So you would want to really consider what might make somebody go off of the place where they waste time to log into your website and participate in something. So maybe you do a live call once a month, or maybe there's, you know, again, there's like a recipe swap or or just something that gets them communicating and active.
Okay, okay. Get them um engaged and not just passive.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's right.
Uh, okay.
Right. You're doing a beautiful job. This is so nice.
Okay, is there like a standard font size for websites?
A standard.
I don't know. Like like, for example, is the, is this too big? Like, you know, the part where life isn't always easy.
Yeah, yeah, so this is, it it's a little on the larger side.
Yeah.
To me, I think, but I I just say, I'm actually making my text smaller and I'm also making it larger. So what you want to like think about is that like obviously people are differently abled and some people do like to have very large font. I would say eighteen for like paragraph font. Uh especially for something like a blog post, eighteen is on the higher end of what I typically recommend. It fourteen would be on the lower end, so between fourteen and eighteen, I think is a really good font size. But if you're really trying to like on your website in this section right here, obviously on a homepage where you've got it in the um desktop view, this works beautifully because this is above the fold. It's really easy to read. Um and so this works fine. But you're definitely going to have to change the font size here on mobile, for instance, because this is
Yeah.
it like it's it's just going to be gigantic on mobile.
It is, it is. Okay, alright. Okay, uh I I'll work on this. Thank you for doing this and for your time.
Absolutely.
Everyone.
Glad you were able to join us today.
It's midnight where I am, one AM.
Hope you get some rest.
I will.
Alright.
Thank you for your time. Okay.
Awesome. I'm so glad she was able to make it. Um Paula says, uh what would suggest for a vendor booth as an event on my Young Living site? Uh so if you are going to be a vendor somewhere, one hundred percent put that into your events manager. Yeah, uh because that way then you can promote it. Uh and so if people are in your area, they'll know to go to that fair and then they could come and see you there. Uh so that would be uh that may be my recommendation if you are uh as a vendor. Um now, if you have a vendor booth and you're wanting to send someone to your good oiling site, that's where you want to learn from Jill Kearns. And you are, I know currently right now in that course, so she's got all the goods on that. Um Allison says, just went through the MC September twenty-three tips campaign email, put the date as a fourth because I want it to start on Monday, but as soon as I clicked it, it now says August thirty. Okay, Allison, we're gonna go take a look at that for you real quick. Alright. So it could be, there is this thing with campaigns and it's like this with follow-up plans as well. If you make a change, you need to click off of that section and I'll I'll go show you here real quick. Uh let me see. Okay. Let's try that. Here we go. So here is the campaign. Um it it looks like it looks like it's going to send on the fourth. It looks like it's working just fine. So um yeah, no, this this is fine. If you were to change it, then um then you do have to. So if you click this, you need to click off. If you wanted to change this to day two, you have to click off. Do you see how? You have to click off for it to refresh. So that is a little tip, but yeah, it looks like okay, yeah, no, um I'm I'm looking at it right now. Uh let me, oh, I I'm actually not sharing my screen, my apologies. Um so yeah, this is actually showing the tips, the email tips. Maybe you're on the text one, but this looks like it's set to send um the first message on the fifth. And uh and you have it set up to go out uh on the fourth. So you want it to start on Monday. Um oh, so you actually want to make this the third. And then this is going to send on, see Mondays here, fourth, eleventh and so on, or fourth, yeah, fourth, eleventh, eighteenth, et cetera. So this will now send on Mondays and that's because Monday is the fourth and you set this to the third. So we can go take a quick look at the text one, just in case that's the one. Yep, that's that's set up correctly. You've got it. You're good to go. Um if you're having issues, if with something maybe like a change not sticking, um I would recommend refreshing your browser or restarting your browser, in some cases clearing the cache in your browser. Uh but if it does appear to be something that's happening on the good oiling end, please let our team know so that we can investigate in case there are any any bugs or issues uh that we need to take a look at. And congratulations on getting that figured out. You look like you got it. Okay, oh, Paula loves Jill's course. We're going to have that put up on our uh on our partners' page some point in the future. I'm so excited that you're enjoying that. Um she really is such a great teacher and it's awesome content. So thank you guys for sticking around. I know we went a little over. We'll be back next week. And we certainly look forward to working with you again. Have a great week, everybody.